Welcome to the Tuesday, December 3, 2024, regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided. Ms. Kelly, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Noting that Chair Lee advises he would be absent in advance, Commissioner Norton.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Dish.
Here.
Commissioner Abrams.
Here.
Secretary Hammerschmidt.
Here.
Vice Chair Weiss.
Here.
You have a question?
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, moved by Commissioner Abrams, seconded by Commissioner Wetherby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 19, 2024 meeting? Moved by Commissioner Hammerschmidt, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up are the reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We start with you, Councilmember Dish, if you are ready.
Yes. Last night, on first reading, our changes to fences, reimbursements, and utilities sailed through.
Thank you. Do we have a manager report this evening?
You do. For my first item, I'd like to share that we are growing our staff yet once more. We welcomed yesterday Part-Time Zoning Coordinator Charlie Collins, and Mr. Collins will attend the ZBA tomorrow. We look forward to his help with our high volume of zoning permits, site visits, and other various tasks to assist Mr. Barrett in the zoning coordination part of the department. I also would like to share as an outgrowth of your request during Commission proposed business, we will be inviting and engaging in discussion with Jennifer Hall and others of the Ann Arbor Housing Commission related to questions on transportation demand management that were raised, utilities, and how that is managed with MISTDA, LI-Tech, Low Income Housing Tax Credit proposal questions that you may have, parking and parking ratios, and how those are managed and/or lobbied through MISTDA, as well as other topics. So, please submit your questions in advance. You can do that by replying to the agenda after it is published and shared with you. I would also like to add that we have a request from just today that is coming to us from City Council, who will be organizing a periodic policy committee, and they're asking for boards and commissions, particular boards and commissions, to weigh in on their policy agenda creation. So, I will be creating a discussion item to your working session as well to preview the current council policy agenda and offer the opportunity for you to advise any omissions or additions that you see in the current version, and then you will have a chance in January to officially approve a resolution with what the Planning Commission contributions to that you would like to see.
Thank you. Just a clarification from my part, because while I was listening intently, I may have missed this. The working session that Jennifer Hall is attending is scheduled for?
December 10.
Great, thank you.
Next Tuesday.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Virtually.
Very good. All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is Public Comment. This is an opportunity, oh, sorry. Do other Commission officers or committee liaisons have anything to report? I'm back in five. All right. Written Communications for today's meeting is available in today's packet. It should also be available in Legislar. Does that include the printed copy that we have in front of us from Commissioner Adams?
Yes, all of the communication, no. The communication from Commissioner Adams is not appropriate to add under the communications, because as a Commissioner, he has privilege to raise whatever during the open discussion of that item. So, we chose not to include it in the packet. If that's something Commissioners would like to see, it seemed a little out of the ordinary to do that for staff, so we chose not to.
Okay, we can table that when we come to it.
Because it's reflected in the minutes and reflected in the discussion, and there's privilege to raise those issues at any time. So, currently, no.
Okay. Thank you. Now, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing. We will first hear from those who are present in the chambers with us, then remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine on the phone, or use the raise hand feature if you are connecting via Zoom. For phone access, you can call 1-877-5, excuse me, 853-5227, and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number, or by name for Zoom participants. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the Commission tonight? Well, welcome, in spite of your reluctance to come and address us for three minutes. We are grateful to have you here. We're a friendly bunch, though we can't talk directly to you unless you talk to us first. And so, that's how it'll go. We'll just sit here and see what kind of notes you're taking. Oh, you can come right up?
Can I come up?
You do, unfortunately, because we have to broadcast your voice to those who may be connected.
I have more of a question, just out of curiosity. My name is Cameron Jeffries. I live on 525 Benjamin. It's a student house. So, this is my last year here. It's my first year living in this house. But I'm just curious about kind of the, I'm sure there's online information, but if there's anything new about like the rolling out of the new dorms, I think, that are being built over on Hoover, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I noticed that there was a stop sign put up, and then it was covered. And I was thinking about kind of like the flow of traffic around that area, especially with a lot of students walking around, because I noticed it's going to be a quad. Is there anything that's going to be done, like to change the nearby streets, or kind of what's the, I only like glanced at the project, but I don't know if this kind of falls under your jurisdiction, or if you've looked at, you know, how that's going to impact traffic, because I already have like so many people that kind of fly through those roads through there. So, I can only imagine that's going to add so much more, since it was formerly just a field.
Sure, yeah. I'm going to actually kick this to Planning Manager Kelly to see if she has a response for you.
I will share that the University of Michigan, this appears via UVM project, they do not have to go through the same site plan process as other applicants, because they're a state land grant institution. They are zoning and everything that we're discussing pretty much at this table is optional for them. However, we do review their projects through friendly agreements. It usually, depending on the project, sometimes it skips our department and goes straight to infrastructure concerns. So, the traffic circulation that you're talking about, and also things like water, wastewater impacts, those would all be reviewed and discussed by the city with the university. And it might be online, but I don't have a specific address to look up. I know the intersection, but I don't know the, oh, intersection. And so, you could reach out to, I believe it's engineering@atugub.org, and ask this question, and they could tell you why the traffic, you know, sign was put in and then bagged, and when some of the other circulation items, how those were being considered for that project.
Just out of curiosity, who represents the university in those conversations?
They have a smorgasbord of departments that are internal, so I think it might depend on the project.
Okay.
But they have internal development teams, and I'm not sure to what extent they use consultants or not, actually, for that particular project. I'm sorry, I don't know. Our public services area does much more interaction on UVM projects than the planning.
Okay, yeah. I forgot to distinguish that Ann Arbor is much more than just a school. Yeah, I tend to do that. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Commission before we check our online participants? See, I told you we were friendly. Planning Manager Kelly, is there anyone on Zoom?
We have no virtual attendees this evening.
So, there is no one to hear from. All right, let's go on to, I will close the public hearing now. Great. And we're now on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is public hearing scheduled for the next regular meeting, and according to this note, there are none. Is that correct? Because the meeting has been canceled.
There are no projects for the December 17 meeting, and we intend to cancel that meeting.
Okay. Excellent. On to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, so I'll move now to 9A. And so, this is a proposed amendment to nonconforming structures, Sections 5.32.2 in the Unified Development Code. Staff presents ordinance revisions to Section 5.32.2 related to nonconforming structures in residential districts. The proposed ordinance revision eliminates zoning board of appeals approval for certain nonconforming structures, improvements, and would allow the planning manager to administratively approve alterations that do not extend closer to lot lines, do not create new nonconformities, and comply with zoning dimensional standards. Alterations include changes, increasing floor area, dwelling units, or exterior building dimensions. Staff recommendation is approval, and we will start with a staff presentation by Mr. Barrett, our zoning coordinator.
Good evening. I'm John Barrett, zoning coordinator for the City of Ann Arbor. On October 8, 2024, I presented a proposed tax amendment for Chapter 55, Section 5.32.2, Nonconforming Structures, to the Planning Commission Working Session. The tax amendment is in response to the zoning board of appeals request. The ZBA requested that changes to Section 5.32.2 be made that will remove the requirement for ZBA approval for certain improvements for nonconforming structures. The proposed amendment will allow administrative approval by the planning manager to approve an alteration or an addition to an existing nonconforming structure that does not extend closer to a lot line, does not create any new nonconformities, and complies with all other zoning district dimensional standards. Section 5.32.2 of the Unified Development Code provides the general standards for three types of nonconformities: nonconforming uses, nonconforming structures, and nonconforming lots. Section 5.32.2, Nonconforming Structures states nonconforming structures may be maintained, and provides regulations on how they may be altered. An alteration is defined as any change in a building that results in additional floor area being fit for occupancy, a greater number of dwelling units or rooming units, or an increase in the exterior dimensions of the building. Currently, the planning manager is permitted to approve alterations to nonconforming structures in an R1, R2, R3, or R4 district if the alteration complies with the requirements of Chapter 55. All other operations must be approved by the ZBA upon finding the alteration complies as nearly as practical with the requirements of the Unified Development Code, notably the zoning district dimensional standards. Over the past 10 years, the ZBA has approved nearly all petitions to alter a nonconforming structure. Since January of 2023, all these petition types have been approved by the board with the following additional features: 22 of the 22 petitions were approved by the ZBA, 21 of them were residential properties, and only one was a nonresidential property. The ZBA rarely receives neighbor correspondence in opposition to an alteration to a nonconforming structure. These approvals and lack of opposition indicate the regulations no longer align with the community's goals. Updating this section will allow Ann Arbor to increase density in existing developments, provide more housing options, and affordable choices, and enable more sustainable forms of development. The application process, public resources, and fees involved under the present rules are also substantial and are perhaps an inefficient use of time and resources for ZBA members, staff, and applicants. Currently, Paragraph B of Section 5.32.2 limits administrative authority to alterations for single-family nonconforming structures in R1, R2, and R3 and R4 districts. They must meet these setback requirements of the zoning district. Any other types of nonconforming structures, such as two-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, or nonresidential buildings, require approval by the zoning board of appeals upon the finding that the alteration complies as nearly as practical with the requirements of this chapter, and will not have a detrimental effect on neighboring property. This proposal would amend Paragraph B of that section to provide a list of standards for planning manager approval of alterations for any nonconforming residential structure, which equals but does not exceed existing nonconforming setbacks. The proposed changes extend administrative approvals to two-family and multiple-family dwellings, and no longer require the alteration to comply with the setback standards. The amendment will allow for new habitable space, which mainly occur in basements and attics, to be utilized and no longer require ZBA approval. Headings in the staff report are also proposed to Section 5.32.2 to help clearly separate the procedures for nonresidential and residential nonconforming structures. Affected parcels. At the October 8, 2024, Planning Commission Working Session, staff was requested to provide information regarding the number of nonconforming residential parcels in the city. A geospatial review found approximately 5,535 parcels zoned either R1, R2, R3, and R4. Of these, approximately 79% are nonconforming. This means that there is a high likelihood of residential projects which would require ZBA approval for alterations under the current zoning rules, and which would conversely receive relief if the present proposal were to be adopted. The tax amendment would potentially reduce petitions coming before the ZBA and the timeline necessary for residential project approval for property owners. The table on page three of this staff report below provides the number of nonconforming lots by residential district in the city. The proposed amendment to Section 5.32.2 is presented on page four, and the complete ordinance is attached in the track changes, as well as accepted changes version, on page five of the staff report. Note that the black text is the unaltered language. Proposed changes presented at the October 8, 2024 Working Session are in red, and subsequently, the revised language is in blue. Revisions reflect requested changes and clarifications to Part B and Items 1 through 4. Specifically, language was added to clarify that the proposed tax amendment would only apply to residential structures and not to commercial structures. While staff were requested to consider bringing commercial structures into the proposed amendment, it was determined that the complexity involved would merit a new effort. Commercial structures bring into the conversation district buffers, possible site plan procedures, and numerous other issues, such as stormwater impacts. If you would turn your attention to the monitors, I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation. An alteration to a nonconforming structure tax amendment proposal. Allow an alteration to a nonconforming residential structure if the nonconformity is not extended or expanded. History of the item. ZBA members requested that the amendment to address high volume of petitions in this category, which have been approved, one to two per month. A shift in the planning philosophy of nonconformities and density and importance of housing availability, alterations have a low threshold in findings of facts. The Planning Commission Working Session on 2/10/2024. I've already gone over this in the staff report and this slide, so we'll just skip that one. And goals of the amendment: to make the application process simpler and lower costs, more efficient use of public resources, match community values regarding nonconforming structures. Examples of this standard. What it is, it's converting nonhabitable space to habitable space, or adding a new unit, no expansion of the building's setbacks or height. Example, adding new bedrooms in the basement to an existing apartment on the first floor. Another example would be adding additional dwelling unit to a home already nonconforming by lot area width or setback. Some of the examples that I've had, this one on 1033 Packard, this property was zoned R4C. It didn't meet the requirements for lot area of 8,500 square feet, width of 60 or side setbacks. Currently, the UDC requires that new habitable space in a nonconforming property requires ZBA approval. This was the existing basement, and the applicant was adding new habitable space to the basement, and so this would no longer, and this proposed tax amendment would be required. That was just a, this is just a photo of that existing property. Proposal of what it would look like after the construction. Here's an example of a previous application that we had. As you see, this property is zoned R1D. R1D District requires a three-foot side setback. The residence was currently at 2 feet 7 inches from the side lot line. The owner came to the city and requested an addition, as you can see in the hatched area, that they wanted to continue the nonconformity along the same existing nonconforming setback at 2 feet 7 inches. Currently, Section 5.32.2 requires ZBA approval for this type of proposed addition to a nonconforming house. The proposed tax amendment would allow staff to approve this residential building and buy a building permit and bypass the ZBA. This is another example of an addition to a nonconforming house. This is at 203 North State Street. They were going to do an addition to the rear of the one-story addition in the back. You can see the proposed addition. The property was nonconforming for lot area, lot width, and setbacks. Prior to the renovation, the house had four units, and after is going to have three units. This was approved already by the ZBA and the HDC, just because they wanted to do a one-story addition, as you can see by the red arrow, and I'm circling that addition to the back of this building. It didn't encroach further into setbacks in the side or the rear. It was straight up on the existing footprint, and this currently requires ZBA approval, and this amendment tonight before you would not require ZBA approval, because it's not expanding the nonconformity that it currently exists. This is another example of an addition that we've had. This one was at 305 Beek Street. This property was nonconforming for lot area and the front setbacks along North Fifth and Beek Street. The applicant came to me and said, "We would like to do a two-story addition to this duplex, and each story will have a bathroom." So, they're doing a two-story addition with two floors, the bathroom on each floor. The proposed addition didn't go any encroach closer to Beek Street than the existing front facade, but since they were, it didn't meet the setbacks already, and this highlighted addition, they needed to go to ZBA for approval. They weren't expanding the nonconformity. They were going along with the current nonconforming situation, but it still requires ZBA approval. And this is just a floor plan of that proposed addition. And this is just a floor plan of that proposed addition. This was another one on Fair Oaks Parkway where the entire property, the entire house, excuse me, was outside of the footprint. They had a very small footprint. It was in the rear yard. They were, it was nonconforming for the rear yard setback. It didn't meet the 40-foot rear yard requirement. They wanted to do a sunroom to the north side of the property. That requires ZBA approval. The sunroom didn't encroach closer to the rear yard setback than the existing house, but it requires ZBA approval and this, again, this text amendment would bypass ZBA for that requirement. This was, this is in your staff report and I just went over this. This is the requested information. It gives all the details of our current situation with all the R1, R2, R3, and R4 properties in the city. How many there are total, how many are nonconforming, and the percentage of nonconforming parcels per district. This is the proposed text amendment with the track changes. The official language or the ordinance language is included in your staff memo in the packet. The proposed application is to be, to apply only to residential properties and no change proposed to standards or findings requirements. Summary conclusion: staffer recommends the Planning Commission approval of the text amendment as proposed by the ZBA. The text amendment will allow administrative approval of permits and streamline the process for homeowners and developers. I can take any questions that you may have at this time.
I think we go to the public hearing first and then we'll have time for questions if that's all right.
A little bit different than the ZBA, but that's fine.
Sorry. So now we'll move to our public hearing for this petition. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We will first hear from those who are present, then remote participants if we've acquired any. To speak remotely, press *9 if on phone or use the raised hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, dial 1-877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name if you are participating via Zoom. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure that you are in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the Planning Commission on this petition? All right. Did we acquire any Zoom participants?
We did not.
With that, I will close the public hearing. I will now read the proposed motion and then we'll go into our discussion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve amendments to Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Section 5.32.2, nonconforming structure to allow administrative approval for additions to nonconforming buildings in residential zoning districts as proposed. Moved by Commissioner Mills. Seconded by Commissioner Wetherby. We are in discussion. Who would like to kick us off? Commissioner Mills.
I want to make sure that I am getting definitions right of a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming lot. I want to make sure that I under, like, based on UDC, a nonconforming lot is one that doesn't meet the minimum area and width, which we know, and so your table that showed all the nonconformities is that. A nonconforming structure doesn't ha, I want to make sure that I understand this right. Doesn't have to be on a nonconfor, if there's a nonconforming lot that's nonconforming because of area, automatically the structure on it becomes nonconforming? Is that right? Because a nonconforming structure is area, height, or setbacks. So the area, is the area that we're talking about the area of the lot or the area of the building?
Area of the lot.
Okay, so automatically, if you're on, if you're on, if you're any kind of structure on a nonconforming lot that is nonconforming because of the area, you are a nonconforming structure.
I have not seen a structure that wasn't, generally, they're not going to be nonconforming if the lot's not.
Okay, but it's possible that we have a nonconforming structure on a conforming lot. It's just setbacks changed over time, right? And so it's nonconforming because of the setbacks. It's not.
That's possible.
Okay, I just want to make, like, because the table was about nonconforming lots and we're talking about nonconforming structure. I just want to make sure we're talking about nonconforming structures. So most of them will apply in those districts.
Correct.
Because we just have tons of nonconforming lots in those districts. It could also apply in other areas. It could be nonconforming for some other reason in another district.
Yeah, you could have a nonconforming lot and then if you are going to do it in addition to a structure and it meets all the requirements of Chapter 55, you won't need to go to ZBA.
Say that one more time.
So if you have any type of proposed construction project
Yep.
and it meets all the requirements of Chapter 55, you can get your project approved by a building permit via staff approval.
Right, because there's this section that effectively says, on a nonconforming lot, you can have the single-family home and you follow these setbacks.
Yep, that's correct.
Got it. So that's, but that's for effectively greenfield development or teardown development, not for alterations.
I'm not clear on what you mean by greenfield.
It means like there's an empty lot that, I mean, we don't have very many empty lots that have never been developed.
We have a few. Unless you say we have a R4C property
Yeah.
that doesn't meet the lot area.
Yep.
The lot, the district requires 8,500 square feet.
Yep.
And let's just say it's 8,000 square feet. By right, you can build a single-family home.
Right, and comply with the R1C setbacks.
Exactly.
Yep, okay.
Because the code allows you to default R4C to R1C and R2A to R1B.
But if you have, just to be clear, if you have an existing structure that you're planning on altering and that is adding additional floor area, livable floor area, which could just mean you don't make any exterior modifications. It's just in the basement, right? On an R4C nonconforming lot, that, that is now an alteration where this rule comes into play. Like the edits that we're talking about will address that.
If it has more than one unit in that structure. If it's multiple units.
Got it.
And if it has multiple units in the R4C property and it's nonconforming, structure, nonconforming lot, and you want to add new habitable space in the basement or the attic, regardless, or just in the, in the basement or attic usually, you have to go to ZBA to get alteration to a nonconforming structure approval because you're a R4C property, you have multiple units, and you're adding new habitable floor area. That new habitable floor area doesn't apply to single-family.
Got it, okay.
It only applies to R4C lots.
Okay. So just going back to where we started, I'm going to repeat the clarification that I needed, which is being a nonconforming lot, being on a nonconforming, a structure on a nonconforming lot that is nonconforming because of area, not because of width, but because of area, that makes you a nonconforming structure.
Not necessarily, no. You can, you can, you can meet this, you can still meet the district setbacks.
But this is where I'm not understanding the definition. And so the definition of a nonconforming structure is that it's nonconforming because it doesn't meet area setback or height. It's not.
It doesn't have to be, it can be one of or doesn't have to be all of them.
But it, but the, I, yeah, again, I'm confused because I thought that the area was associated with the lot, not, the area wasn't associated with the structure. Is this?
No, this makes sense. What you are asking for clarification on needs to be clarified.
Okay, it's just the area and because of lot and structure that I'm confused. If you, if I have a lot that is, that has a struc, if I have a nonconforming lot and the reason that the lot is not conforming is because of the area, the structure on it. I'm imagining a Venn diagram, sorry, where a lot of the things, like some of the Venn diagram of what's, what's nonconforming structure is because it's on a, on a, on a lot, a nonconforming lot that's not conforming because of area.
What's the property zone in your example? If it's zoned, if it's single-family and it's R1C lot and it requires 7,200 square feet and it's 6,800 square feet, but you want, you want to do an addition to the existing home and it meets all the requirements of Chapter 55, you can do that by a building permit. If it's a R4C lot and it's nonconforming for lot width, lot area, and you want to do an expansion, you have to come to ZBA for approval.
Okay, now that I know where you were going, I apologize and I'm really not trying to be difficult, but it's trying to help me put Commissioner Adams, like, getting in my head. Can you repeat what you just said again? So you asked me, what is, what is your zone?
Right.
Okay, and one does require variance and one doesn't. And this is the crux of it. I'm trying to get at the definition, the definition of nonconforming lot, not all, of nonconforming structures, not all nonconforming structures are requiring this variance, but I'm trying to get, understand that, yeah. So can you repeat what you said about the zoning district? Which ones need, when I said, yeah.
So if you, well, this is for nonconforming structures, but for nonconform, nonconforming structures and nonconforming lots are completely separate. So we're not making any changes to the nonconforming lots.
And I think this is why I'm confused because the table that you showed was about nonconforming lots.
Well, that's just because, that was the information that was requested at this working session.
Yeah.
And we supplied that information. It was talking about, it was, it was just a generality about how many nonconforming lots do we have in the city?
Mm-hmm.
But if you have a nonconforming lot, it doesn't necessarily mean you, if, if you can still meet all the requirements of Chapter 55, you can, you don't have to go to ZBA unless you're an R4C lot.
I'm going to recognize Commissioner Norton for a moment.
I think the point of confusion, it's, you can have a conforming structure, you can have a conforming structure on a nonconforming lot.
That's correct.
Because the non, definition of nonconforming lot allows for the, for certain kinds of structures, single-family structures. So that's why they're separate. So the data, the table was showing, we have a gobs of nonconforming lots, which really suggests we need to change the zoning, but that's a separate issue. This is just dealing with, if you have a structure that you want to somehow change and it could be on a nonconforming lot, doesn't matter. As long as you're still complying with what you could do otherwise.
Correct.
Under the terms of this, you can get approval. So really, the question is boiled down to, who, who's going to approve it, the ZBA or the?
Staff administratively.
Staff administrator.
Correct.
And this shift is just trying to make it so that more of these kinds of changes could be made directly by the staff administrator.
Yes, but again, this is not actually in the, in the section. It's not in the alteration section. I'm, it's the definition of nonconforming structure that says area. And so what I'm trying to understand is, are we talking about two different kinds of areas? Okay, so we're, in a nonconforming structure, we're talking about like lot area coverage. No, we're talking about.
Building area footprint.
Building area footprint.
Building area.
Got it. Okay, so. And that, and the definition is not clear. And that's, and so that's why, that's why the question rose and particularly because I know we asked for, like, we got a lot of nonconforming lots, but we're talking about nonconforming structures and I know.
They, they kind of work hand in hand, though.
Right.
If you think about it, there's so many nonconforming lots that there's bound to be a number of structures that don't comply with the district setbacks because these lots don't comply with the lot width or the lot area.
Sure.
It's almost impossible to comply with the setback requirements and all the dimensional standards of the district if your lot is so small and it doesn't comply.
Got it. Okay, now that I know that this is not necessarily, this is not, this is just the structures part. I now can understand, I'm ready for the conversation that's to come and I'm thinking that personally, I'm thinking that maybe we need to add, thinking about the definite, differentiating the kinds of areas in our definitions because it's real unclear when we're talking about lot area and when we're talking about building footprint because we don't call it area in the tables, I think. I'll go back and double-check that. But like, we, both of them say area and we're not clear about what that is. So I'm good now. Thank you for answering my questions. And now I'm, like, I, that's just making sure that I have the right thing because I think we want to make sure the whole purpose of this is to not send as many things for variances. And so I wanted to make sure that, that what, how we define, how we were defining things wasn't part of the problem. Okay.
All right, Commissioner Abrams, you're good. All right, Commissioner Adams.
So, Mr. Barrett, I just, maybe, maybe another way of framing up our discussion just a moment ago would be to ask a question and maybe get a little more background. So the code currently allows the planning manager to bypass the ZBA for an R1, you know, a single-family dwelling, an alteration to a nonconforming single-family dwelling in an R1, R2, R3, R4 district. And I understood the, the purpose of this was to expand that to, you know, multi-family, to, you know, two-family or multi-family structures and get more of this work that is mostly being approved without discussion off the ZBA's docket sheet.
Correct.
If I were doing that, we, and given the way the current exceptions were, the current exception states that the planning manager makes a determination that it conforms, the alteration conforms to all the requirements of this chapter, right? And then it's eligible, checks the boxes that it's an R1, R2, R3, or R4 district and a single-family dwelling and it's an alteration and then it can, it can bypass. My question, or maybe where I got confused is the proposed language expands the exception but then adds more requirements, right? It, it takes that language of conforms to all the requirements of this chapter and then it unpacks them into like four things, 1, 2, 3, 4. And when I was reading the 1, 2, 3, 4, I thought to myself, well, that's more, that's more exacting. And in the case of, you know, something that gets closer to a lot line, it's not necessarily something that I care about. If something gets closer to a lot line without tripping over a setback or causing some other nonconformity, then I wouldn't want to necessarily subject it to higher scrutiny because it's not creating a new nonconformance, right? That the nonconformance is staying the same. There hasn't been a new one created and that's really what current code focuses on. It focuses on, does the alteration conform to all the requirements of this chapter? If it doesn't, then my understanding is that under our default set of rules, it would go in as a variance. It would not be an alteration to a nonconforming structure. It would be, I'm trying to encroach on a setback, in which case I need a variance. So if I were trying to expand this exception, what I would do is say, instead of R1, R2, R3, R4, and single-family dwellings, I would say more or less, you know, anything, any residential, any residential alteration is something that the planning manager can approve provided it conforms to all the requirements of this chapter. That's a very simple and straightforward way of expanding the exception without creating new lists and other things. So my question is very long-winded. My question is, there's a, there's a rationale behind the reason it's worded the way that it is. And before I say, "Let's go back to the drawing board and make it simpler", what am I missing about the way that it's done on the page?
And after our brief discussion before the meeting started, I thought about it. And if you look at that last sentence that was being questioned a little bit, is the, otherwise the alteration require variance approval. In all four of those bullet points, if you don't meet any one of those, it does require variance. So the statement is true and we can go through each one. The alteration does not extend closer to the lot line than any part of the existing nonconforming structure. So if we look at the example on our screen, you have a nonconforming house that doesn't meet the R1C district setbacks, correct? meet the R1C district setbacks, correct? Or, excuse me, the R1D. The R1D district requires a three-foot side yard setback. The existing house is at two feet, seven inches. It's five inches encroaching into that three-foot setback. The applicants want to do an addition and continue along that same existing plane of two feet, seven inches. That requires an alteration to a nonconforming structure. We're gonna, what we're trying to do is eliminate the alteration to a nonconforming structure step altogether in all the R1, R2, R3, 4 districts. If this proposed addition was inset five inches and met three feet, they could get it approved by, administratively by a residential building permit. If that addition went down to two feet, five inches and encroached two inches, that doesn't meet number one and would require a variance. Number two, if the alteration does not create any new nonconformities on the lot or in adjacent lot, if you're creating a new nonconformity situation, that means you don't, your addition, your project doesn't meet the Chapter 55 requirements and it's creating a nonconforming situation, you need a variance.
No objection there.
No objection, yep. Number three, the alteration maintains compliance with all other dimensional standards of the zoning district for the lot on which it's located. If you meet all the requirements of the R1D district, you can get it approved. If you don't, you need a variance. And number four, the alteration will meet all other code and ordinance requirements, setbacks, height requirements for the R1D district, building code. If you don't meet any of, if you don't meet something of that, of that code, you need a variance. So all four of those bullet points are a true statement that you will need a variance. Otherwise, you'll need a variance, because in every situation, if you don't meet one of those four, that rule will require a variance.
That's right.
And no longer an alteration. The alteration is gone. It doesn't exist.
Yeah.
With this, with the, for residential structures.
I want to push on two points. So the example that you've given here, I understand intuitively why extending, if you have a, if you're overlapping onto a setback and you're, that's the, what this example, it looks like I've got on the right side of the screen, that the existing house is in the setback a little bit. Is that what I'm looking at?
That's correct. It's encroaching five inches.
So I'm pushing out over top of that setback and expanding, I'm aggravating the nonconformance as I push out.
In this diagram?
Correct.
No, they weren't. You see, you see at the bottom, it says two feet, seven inches, and then at the top, it says two feet, seven inches?
Yeah.
That proposed addition continued the same two feet, seven inches. They built along the same facade elevation plane, if you will.
Yeah.
And that, today, that requires an alteration to a nonconforming structure. You have to go to the zoning board of appeals and get approval for an alteration, because you're not meeting the three-foot side setback.
Because they were building farther into a setback.
They're not building farther into it. They're building along the same setback of two feet, seven inches.
But that's what I'm looking at up here, right?
I understand, I think I understand.
It's not, what I'm getting at is, it's not that it's getting closer to the lot line.
It's not.
That's, it's that it's, it's trampling on the setback additionally, correct?
It's, the setbacks, the nonconformity is already at two feet, seven inches.
Right, but it's aggravating it, which is why it has to go in front of the ZBA. Like, I'm massively missing something.
It doesn't meet the three feet, so it has to go to the ZBA, because your project doesn't meet it. What we're saying is, if this tax amendment is proposed, a scenario like this will not require ZBA approval any longer. You don't have to get your alteration. You can now get this, I can approve this project, the planning manager can approve this project via building permit.
I'm missing something, but rather than take up the entire meeting, let me ask the question a different way. The current language says that the planning manager can approve, can bypass ZBA if the project conforms to all of the requirements of this chapter.
Yes.
We are now adding a list of four, instead of, instead of that language, I'm adding, I'm like, unpacking it into four. Go ahead.
The planning manager can now approve if this meets all the requirements of the chapter. This doesn't meet all the requirements of the chapter. The requirement is three feet. They're still staying at two, seven. So you have to go get this alteration to a nonconforming structure, which has kind of become a rubber stamp at ZBA, because we only have one finding of fact to meet, and that is, it won't have a detrimental impact to surrounding property owners. We're not getting any negative feedback from surrounding property owners. We're not getting any, anyone to show up at the meetings, and no correspondence. So every one of them, they require a $1,000 application fee, they require a survey, they require elevation floor plans, and we go through the whole process, and they're being approved automatically.
I still don't, I still don't get it, but I gotta let some of you stop.
All right, we'll start with Commissioner Abrams and then Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. This is related but slightly different, which is that I feel like there's still a loophole in number one. So if you had a nonconforming structure, which was nonconforming based on its height, but say its setbacks were greater than the required setback, and the alteration did extend closer to the lot line but was still within the legal setback, we wouldn't want that to have to go to ZBA, right? So I'm saying, I think the intent of one makes sense to me, but the language feels like maybe too specific about extending closer to the, like, it would be possible for a nonconforming structure to have an alteration that extended closer to the lot line but was still within the required setback. It still met the setback requirement, because it was nonconforming because of its height, say.
If you were to put in a second-story addition on this house?
No. Okay, so, don't forget this one. So imagine you have a, imagine a structure, it's nonconforming because it's too tall.
Okay.
But it, but it meets the setback requirements.
Okay.
Say it's actually generous, it has room to spare.
So in a R1C district, your height, maximum height is 30 feet.
Yeah.
And it's 35 feet.
Sure. And what are the, what are the side setback requirements?
Five feet.
Okay, so say it has 10-foot side setbacks.
The house sits 10 feet from the lot line.
Yeah. And then say the alteration reduces that to seven-foot setback.
Okay.
So it's still within the?
Does the height still stay at 35?
Yeah.
Then it requires alteration to a nonconforming structure currently.
No, I know currently, but I'm saying, we would want that one to be able to have planning manager approval.
It would.
It couldn't here, because it says, it can't extend closer to the lot line. So in this case, do you see what I'm saying? It'd be possible to extend closer to the lot. I guess I'm just saying, let's change that to say, meeting the setback requirement.
Okay, because if it extends closer to the lot line, but it still meets the district requirement, then I can, we can approve that administratively.
We want to be able to.
You could, because I'd be reviewing the plans, I'd look at the setbacks, I'd look at the district.
Even if it was nonconforming for height?
If it, if this gets approved.
Oh, right.
If this gets approved, and that height stays at 35 feet.
Yeah.
And the addition goes to seven feet, and the requirement's five, it meets all the district requirement, it meets all the dimensional requirements of the R1C district, and it meets all the requirements of Chapter 55, I can approve it.
So I understand that, but technically, it's violating number one, because number one says, it can't extend closer to the lot line. So I think if we just change that and said, the alteration does not, help me out here, people.
Then it would, number four, it has to meet all other code and ordinance.
Yeah, it does.
And so then I could approve it.
But doesn't it have to meet all four of these?
Well, see, so, in your example, the house is 10 feet off the side lot line.
Yeah.
So it's not nonconforming.
It's nonconforming because it's too tall.
But, so, if we approve this tax amendment, that will take care of that.
Why?
Because you can, because you can, we can approve it, because it's maintaining the same setback, or the same height.
But it's violating number one on here, and it's, and this text clearly says that if it doesn't meet all four of these standards, it has to go get a variance from the ZBA.
Well, it extends closer to the lot line, but it meets those setback requirements.
Yes, exactly. Well, I'm just saying, if we just change the language of number one and say, instead of being, instead of it being about extending closer to the lot line, it just needs to meet the setbacks. Well, it's either, I'm saying, you want to count for both. Okay, you can move on from me.
Okay, no, no, because?
We're not, we're gonna stay with you, but Commissioner, Councilmember Dish would like to jump in.
What you're raising is clarifying what Commissioner Adams is objecting to, right? So can I just clarify? So Commissioner Adams is speaking to a situation where you had a nonconforming structure that was not nonconforming by virtue the way that one is, extending into a setback. It's nonconforming for some other reason. Commissioner Abrams has said, what if it's height? Yes. Okay, so, we, we want, we want to make it possible for that, what's on the screen, not to go to ZBA. So we want to make it clear that it does not have to, that you do not have to meet setback requirements in order to avoid going to the ZBA, because that would have to go to the ZBA if we specify that. If we specify, if we put setback into point one. So could we not insert something like, the alteration does not extend a nonconformity closer to the lot line? Because it wouldn't be a problem in the scenario that Commissioner Abrams just outlined, for the addition to extend further into, closer to the lot line, that's not a problem in the situation that you outlined, and this is what Commissioner Adams' objection is. So it's extending the nonconformity, that's the problem. The way point one is written now is it assumes that all nonconforming structures have a setback nonconformity component to them. But that may not be true, as in the example that Commissioner Abrams gave. Is that clear?
Number, it's not, what you described is covered in number two.
I see the points that are being raised right now. We could add some clarifying language, it's not exactly coming to me succinctly, but something that would refer to, to specify that the issue is the exacerbation of the setback for number one, because what we're trying to get at in number one is specific to setbacks. But the way it's written would potentially lend a conforming for setbacks, nonconforming property seeking to be altered, to not expand into their setback area the way their neighbors are. And that's not the point. So I do see what is being raised, and we could think about, first of all, let me say that we're very happy to bring this back to another meeting in January, because sometimes the table amendments can be a little messy, and we would be happy to, to renotice and bring back with some potentially new language, or to postpone to a certain date. Not to stop the discussion, but just to share that. But I see what's being raised.
Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, and the other, just to elaborate on a point I made before, we have an existing exemption, a carve-out in here, that I haven't heard anything or read anything in the staff report regarding it not working well, insofar as the planning manager makes this determination that the alteration conforms to all of the requirements of this chapter. And expanding on that with a list of things that now have to be interpreted and applied, I'd have to understand the rationale for that to want to support it, because that's more language, it's more stuff, there's judgment that goes into, upon a finding it conforms to all the requirements of this chapter. Why do we want to change that? Because we're just trying to expand something that applies to these districts to more types of stuff. And it feels like we ought to be able to do that without doing a bunch more drafting. So if we can do it simpler, I think we ought to do it simpler. If we have to have this list, then I think we ought to make it clear that you got to meet all the elements of the list. And then the language at the end about variance approval, I don't think we need, unless we need it for a reason I don't understand.
Other commissioners, unless you want to make an amendment. Okay, Councilmember Dish.
So I did want to point to something that sounded like a disparity to me in the staff memo, and it's, so on page two of the staff memo, the amendment is described as allowing an alteration if the following are true. It does not extend closer to the lot line, we've discussed the issue with that. It does not create any new nonconformities, that totally makes sense. It complies with district height setback and other dimensional standards. Wait a minute, doesn't that undo what, I mean, well, okay, and then on page three of the, on page three of the staff memo, it says, the proposed changes extend administrative approval to two-family and multiple-family dwellings and no longer require the alteration to comply with setback standards, which I am understanding is one of the key elements of this, but that, the language on page two seems to contradict the language on page three, unless there's something that I don't understand about the word setback.
So we're looking at page three.
Page three.
And which paragraph or?
Okay, hold on.
This proposal would amend paragraph B to provide a list of standards.
This is, yeah, that's that first paragraph, right?
For planning manager approval.
Right.
And that seems to be in conflict with something on the previous page?
This one, this paragraph seems correct.
Okay.
The proposal, the proposed changes extend administrative approvals to two-family and multiple-family dwellings and no longer require the alteration to comply with setback standards. On page two, if you look under the paragraph that says, description of amendment, it's the penultimate on the page.
Right.
There are four bullet points. If you look at the third bullet point, the third bullet point says, the alteration must comply with setback. Sorry.
I understand.
Yeah.
I see the conflict there. John, did you want to speak to that?
No, I'll pass.
All right, Commissioner Norton.
So not, we're not trying to beat up on you, Mr. Barrett. We're just trying to figure out how to do this as neatly as possible. I'm kind of picking up on Commissioner Abrams' comment. Would there be, would it work just as well to basically replicate the language for the nonconforming structures, where the ZBA is making the approval upon finding that it meets the requirements, and to say, for residential structures, the planning manager has issued approval because it meets all the requirements of the structure? Is there, I guess I'm kind of picking up on why, why is it necessary to list out all of these particular items? Is that to give you guidance on how to apply it, or is it, or is it trying to provide clarity that maybe it's kind of making more?
What are you saying, so you're saying B should say what?
So B could read, alterations to residential nonconforming structures, an alteration meeting, or kind of paralleling, it's top language, an alteration is approved by the planning manager upon finding that it has complied with the requirements of this chapter, and it will not have a detrimental effect on neighboring property.
So what is the benefit to the staff interpretation of the proposed new standards to guide the planning manager approval versus to say, as nearly as practical, practicable? Basically, is there, what would be the staff benefit, or overall benefit of the new language as opposed to streamlined language?
So the, so the, the new alteration will have to comply with all the setbacks standards, the requirements of the chapter, not nearly as practicable. So it'll have to comply, otherwise you'd need a variance.
Is that true for nonconforming structures that are going before the ZBA anyway?
I'm confused by what you're asking me right now.
The whole purpose of this is to take off of the ZBA's plate.
Right, alterations to nonconforming structures.
For residential structures.
For, yep.
But, and they're still dealing with the non-residential structures.
Correct.
So what's, why have the language that applies to you be any different than the language that applies to them? Why spell out in detail the particular criteria the planning manager has to use when we don't do that for what the ZBA has to do?
I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Can I take a stab? So could we, for A, you have a clear articulation, and what we're looking at, if I understand Commissioner Norton correctly, is to effectively mirror the language, so you would get rid of all the sub-points, and it would just say, residential nonconforming structures and alteration must meet the standards that will be approved by the planning manager. We'll have to figure out the language there, because it, the way it's written now, it depends on the four sub-points, but it would be striking those and giving the discretion back to the planning manager as you give it.
Give you more discretion, but I could see where you want to have it spelled out.
Yeah, exactly, because A applies to non-residential, so let's not even look at A.
Sure.
B is saying that the alteration has to comply with the four below, and if it doesn't, it's going to require a variance. It's all the same. And so if it doesn't, if your project doesn't meet the four steps below, it's going to require a variance.
Right, and I think the? Right, and I think the, the, the interest in the conversation at the table is, could you leave that description to the planning manager as opposed to striking, having it written in code? Because we're trying to simplify, and the way it's written, the table has some...
Let's say you had an addition that didn't comply with the setback, like in this example. You have to say, those, you have to apply those four bullet points in order to approve it administratively. And I don't know how you would say that in B, by saying an alteration, if you say it must meet all the requirements of chapter 55. This wouldn't, because it doesn't meet the three-foot side setback. So what those bullet points are doing is allowing staff to approve something administratively that doesn't meet all the requirements of chapter 55.
Okay, I, I understand, I think I understand the, the flow that you are in. I'm, I think I need a moment to step out of it to figure out how I would articulate what I'm hearing at the table.
Because A says it has to meet all the requirements of this chapter. B is saying it doesn't have to meet all the requirements of the chapter if it meets the four standards below.
Sure, except for these things.
The point is, we're going to try to approve something administratively that doesn't meet code.
And you don't want that to be, I'm sorry, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but as I'm processing it, you don't want to leave that to the discretion of the planning manager, you want that explicitly stated.
Well, I want, I want standards applied.
Okay, great.
And that's what the four bullet points do.
And so it should meet, it should meet, it should meet these standards.
Because you can't just simply say, "The alteration doesn't have to comply with the, with chapter 55."
Sure.
It says, it can, it has to comply with 55, and, or these four, these four points.
Okay.
What we're, we're doing is we're, we're allowing something administratively that's not allowed by code.
Right. And you're trying to simplify it for the person who currently has to come to ZBA, who almost always gets an approval. And so you're just trying to simplify that. And I wonder, I think in, as I'm listening to the conversation, I think there's, because I was also thinking about the height as a nonconforming, because I'm in a R1C, and it's like, if we're at 35, because the house was built before the standard was put in place, now we're in a nonconforming structure, and if we wanted to put in a, an office that now encroaches into the set, side setback, it would, I could get tripped up here if I had a neighbor who was concerned that I'm now encroaching this, this setback.
So what you just said was, if I basically build an addition that encroaches into the setback.
Yeah.
That's going to require a variance.
But it's still inside the lot setback for RC1, so I'm, I'm currently...
No, you just said it doesn't meet the side setback.
Okay, great.
So if you don't meet that R1C five-foot side setback, and you're at four feet, that requires a variance.
Okay.
But if you continue with the 35-foot height, and you don't change that height, and still stay at 35, and you're at five feet, or six, or seven, you can get approved administratively.
Okay.
It's only when you don't meet the, the dimensional standards for the district and all the requirements for chapter 55. And that's why those four bullet points are there, because that's saying, you don't meet the requirements of this chapter.
Yeah. We're, we're just in a, we're in a interesting position, because we're trying to permit things that are not permitted by code.
Exactly, it's basically an administrative variance.
And, and that, that's what is creating a lot of this tension.
But these conditions currently exist.
No, no, that, that, you are absolutely right.
And we're not increasing them.
Yes, you are absolutely right.
We're just staying along the same...
We're trying to provide relief that we are already providing, but putting it into code, even though the code says it shouldn't be provided. And that, that is a, that is a challenge, if anyone's like, what are we actually talking about? That, that is it. All right, let's go back to the table to see if anyone else has additions or changes you want to propose.
This is a quirky, quirkily worded set of provisions, just the way it was drafted originally. It doesn't make sense to me. Just strictly for legal drafting reasons. Could we play with this more before carrying forward? And I'm happy to give you some thoughts on why I think it's quirky.
Sure, what we could do is we could, actually, your calendar is coming up on this agenda, so I had a lot of time to think about. So we could postpone this, for example, for a vote in February, or second meeting of February, or something along those lines, and schedule it for a working session in between now and then, something along those lines.
I'm happy to play with this and make suggestions.
To bring it back to a working session for...
I totally get what you're trying to do, and, and I understand the desire to have these criteria listed out, but the way it's just drafted is just hard to follow. And part of that's because the way it was drafted originally.
Commissioner Dish?
Well, we've, we've had a working session, right, on it, which was extensive. I think the concerns are clear. We've raised a concern that the first point is actually creating some inflexibility that it doesn't intend, and that's going to be corrected. The alteration does not create a new nonconformity on the lot or an adjacent lot. Is there anything unclear about that? Does not create a new nonconformity, so I couldn't, well, no, I'm not even going to try, because I can't do those cases. That's, that's Alice' job. The alteration maintains compliance with all other dimensional standards of the zoning district for the lot on which it is located. That might not be easy for a layperson to understand, but I think that most people who do work with the city understand that there are nonconforming structures and nonconforming lots, and that would be clear to them. And then, all other code and ordinance requirements, yeah, you have to meet everything, but you don't have to meet setbacks. And you can extend closer to the lot line if you aren't already encroaching on the set. But, you know, that's number one. So this seems to me not to require more group effort. If maybe you guys want to correspond, Commissioner Norton, that, that seems great, but I feel like it wouldn't be a good use of a work session, which are, you know, we've got a lot of stuff to do. I would rather have Kevin, whose last name I don't know, dot, is, no, no, I would like Kevin McDonald to come back, but that's not it. I would like to name the park after Kevin McDonald. No, I mean Kevin, who's the economic development person. I would like him to come back and talk to us about the, the rationale for the districts that exclude housing in the comp plan. So, you know, that would be a great use of a work session.
Consultant Kevin, I'm sorry. It's H, maybe? I'm so sorry.
It's okay. I'm really glad that you don't know it either.
I have Kevin McDonald stuck in my head, and I'll have to left the record note for him off the bookmark 8:14 PM for your...
Yes.
See if it was picked up by the mic.
So it looks like the, there's some agreement at the table of where some of the confusion is, and it seems to be centered at number one. So how do we interpret what a lot line, how do we interpret number one correctly? So if there is an opportunity for that to be done offline, and then it could just come back as a revision as opposed to a work session, seems to be the...
The things I want to propose are really, they're minor, but there's just like drafting is driving me nuts. It says you shall, you shall make, you, you can't do this unless the conditions are met, but then the verbiage changes, the phrasing changes in the way it's presented. So minor just drafting tweaks is all I'm suggesting, and I'm happy to write them up and email them.
You're welcome to email proposal to staff.
Yep. We would have to renotice, and we'd have to redo the public hearings and the presentation if we don't approve it tonight. Is that correct?
Um, no. If we postpone to a date certain, then it does not need to be renoticed if we're still working within the changes and scope of the section referenced in the public hearing advertisement, which we would be.
Right, so could we move it to the second meeting of January? And then that would give the rest of December into January enough time? And do I need to pull out my Robert's Rules of Order to figure out?
Just give me one minute. That would be the 23rd, it's moved to a Thursday due to, it's a schedule adjustment for Martin Luther King Jr., which is fine, just speaking out loud, which would give staff the first, roughly week and a half of January, and until then, I think we could do that, the 1/23 meeting to postpone. So a motion might sound like the Planning Commission moves to postpone the discussion or the agenda item for nonconforming structures to the January 23, 2025 meeting.
So moved? Is there a second? Commissioner Mills, seconds?
I don't think I can. That was language free.
I, I moved it. You, you spoke, you spoke the language, and I accepted it, and I moved it. That, that, that's acceptable. The motion has been made, and second it, is there any discussion of this postponement to a date certain, January 23rd? Seeing no discussion, can we just do a voice vote, or vote, or would you rather do a roll call vote?
Postponement is fine to have as a voice vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay? Great, the ayes have it.
Okay, and so the extent of the discussion is for us to consider the clarity of language around standards about the shals and the requirements and standards being met, so anything that is specifying requirements for applicants. And then also I heard consistency with how that's presented elsewhere in the UDC, so maybe look at that. And to make sure there's not an unintended consequence in the first required standard. Am I missing anything else? And then maybe the final sentence about otherwise a variance would be required, maybe strike it or simplify it, so to just not say anything unnecessary. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a break? Are we ready to keep going? Okay. Well, we're moving on to 9B. We'll introduce the petition, which is the Dexter Road and Seibold Road Park rezoning, the proposed zoning of 2570, 2576, and 2580 Dexter Road to public land. The lots were recently acquired by the city for a public park. Staff recommendation is approval, and we have a staff presentation.
So this is a staff-initiated rezoning of three parcels at the corner of Dexter Road and Seibold Drive from their current zoning of R1C, single-family dwelling district, to PL, public land. Because the three parcels were recently acquired by the city for a public park, the parcels were purchased using proceeds from the Open Space and Parkland Preservation Millage and funds from the City of Ann Arbor General Fund. Because they are now owned by the city, the, the appropriate zoning designation is public land, but purchasing or accepting land donations doesn't automatically change the zoning designation, which is why we are here tonight. The three lots contain 0.6 acres, and they meet all applicable standards of the PL district. Please note that there is no official name for this park yet. The Department of Parks and Recreation will undergo their official naming and renaming policy for the park. I think that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. We'll move now to the public hearing for this petition. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this issue. We'll first hear from those who are present, and then remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone, or use the raised hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, call 1-877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name for Zoom participants. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on this petition? Seeing none, do we acquire Zoom participants?
We have not.
Given that there are no Zoom participants, I am closing this public hearing, and we'll read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the park at Dexter Road and Seibold Drive rezoning from R1C, single-family dwelling, to PL, public land. Moved by Dish, Councilmember Dish, and Commissioner Wetherby. We are in discussion.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm going to vote in favor of this. Parks are great. I, I guess I'm just, I know that Parks Department are like, you know, it's, it's more to maintain now, that it's like becoming a park, and I was just, you know, looking at the map, it's like right by Vets, it's 10 minutes away from another park. I assume that when the Parks Department is, they have a process that they go through, and this was like designated as an area that needed this, and that is why we are, they have acquired this and we are doing this?
So I happen to know that the, there is actually quite a robust process that is followed, and there's a whole list of criteria for park acquisitions and namings and all sorts of things that go through, and are also recorded by the Parks Advisory Commission. So this particular park would have also, I believe, been discussed at that body.
Okay, so we can be assured that this was an area that does need this park, and not just like, oh, this parcel came available, let's just take it.
I can assure you a robust process was followed. I can also let you know that there's millage dollars available for park acquisitions, and that's...
And then, and then maintenance also, right? Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll hear from Councilmember Dish, and then Commissioner Wetherby, please.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Hammerschmidt's very good question, I have no doubt that a robust process was followed, because this used green belt funds, and that's a pretty rigorous thing. So perhaps it would be great just to have, why? Why did, you know, have them ask, ask the Parks people to put that in some memo, maybe not in the planning staff's memo, but in attachment for council, so they know why this was acquired.
Thank you, Councilmember Dish. Commissioner Wetherby?
So I can't find it right now, but I did look this up earlier, because I had the same question. And it was actually first discussed by council in 2021, so it has taken some time. And it was land from St. Joe's that the city bought, and it was in large part to serve the housing development that's right adjacent on Seibold, Seibold Road. And I think there was a lot of discussion about it, and that it was sort of an underserved area, because you had to cross big roads to get to a park, and that was what was in it in 2021. So it's kind of exciting that, lo, these many years later, it's actually coming to, to the front. But yeah, I, I had the same thing, because I thought, well, that'd be a good spot for housing, but it looks like it's going to be a good spot for a park.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Mick Skelly?
On the motion as presented, Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetherby?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
That carries.
On to 10A, other business. I will introduce the petition. It's our 2025 City Planning Commission calendar adoption and we have a staff presentation.
Oh, hot off the press from yesterday, we received the city council 2025 calendar and we made some last-minute adjustments to the draft that's in your packet accordingly. You'll see that there are certain dates that have been moved for schedule adjustments due to city holidays and we work backward from priority in this room and also seat, our CTN time from city council, so the boards and commissions have, so sure we're not creating conflicts. So what is in your packet is what we propose for 2025. There are numbered changes for all of the items which have been shifted around due to the reasons that I just mentioned. And it would have your first January meeting on January 7th. We also included the, sometimes we've presented these as separate calendars for the ordinance revisions committee or other calendars. We thought it would be more efficient to just include those here and also to make sure you have some dates you can set aside for the comprehensive plan subcommittee, which has been requested. So I endeavor to pin those down for you all. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We, we did scour these for conflicts and we also added some additional schedule adjustments that we thought were appropriate, for example, for high holidays for Rosh Hashanah and so forth.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, I will read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission adopts its 2025 meeting calendar as presented in the agenda packet. Moved by Commissioner Mills. Second it by, okay, Councilmember Dish. All right, itty, I don't know, I think that's it. Oh, yeah, any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? The motion carries. We come to agenda item number 11, the final public comment for this meeting. This is another opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes, this time on any issue. We will first hear from those present, then remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone or use the raised hand feature for Zoom. For phone access, dial 1-877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name for Zoom participants. You will hear a announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the planning commission? Seeing none, did we acquire any Zoom participants? We did not. So I will close this public hearing. Is there any commission proposed business?
I would like to share something if, if that's okay.
Yes, you, you absolutely may.
Thanks. The public commenter earlier asked about where to find information about the Elbeel Field project and it appears that most of that is consolidated on our online permitting software, which is called Stream under, all caps, UM-PROJ23-0002. You can access online information by going to stream.a2gup.org to find information, submitted materials about petitions. So staff memos about traffic circulation or any comments, engineering comments, which have been provided to U of M are very likely to be in one of the permits that is associated with that project. However, if that's too much to go through, you can still email engineering@a2gup.org. But I did want to share that even though U of M voluntarily participates in many reviews with the city, we do capture those under project IDs and in this case, the civil construction plans are still in process. For example, there is a right-of-way permit still in process, various right-of-way permits, so those can all be viewed by going to Stream, record search and then typing in, you could try Elbeel, E-L-B-E-L, or you can use the whole project ID, UM-PROJ23-0002.
Thank you. Is there any commission proposed business? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number 13, which is adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Dish, second it by Commissioner Abrams. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Great, the meeting is adjourned.
You're released.